305 Board Meeting, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has there been any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Madam President, we have an addendum to the Personnel Report that is at your place.
Thank you.
And we do not need an Executive Session meeting tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
Emma Doherty, Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Moving on on our agenda to recognitions and presentations, Jennifer Bradford Vernon with You Make a Difference Awards.
The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission at Salina Public Schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a Board of Education member. Christopher Walker, Custodian, and Randy Booth, Building Operator, at Cottonwood Elementary School. Cottonwood Elementary had a custodian retire at the end of December. While the search for replacement custodian began immediately, unforeseen circumstances arose to delay the search. With their positive can-do attitudes, Christopher and Randy absorbed the extra work and stress to maintain the high standards of service for Cottonwood students, staff, and families. Thank you, Christopher and Randy, for making a difference. Central High School Food Service Staff. With the construction of a new kitchen at Central High School, the food service staff faced extreme challenges daily. Carrying supplies up from the basement, maneuvering through construction barriers, dust and fumes, heating food with roaster pans and microwaves, all of these became regular challenges. Regardless, the food service staff at Central remained committed to serving hot meals. Thank you for making a difference. Rhonda Legroon, Social Worker, Schilling and Coronado Elementary Schools. Rhonda embraced the challenge of a T-shirt fundraiser for a colleague facing a health challenge. Giving generously of her time, she designed, ordered, and distributed the T-shirts. Rhonda's attitude and actions remind us about the importance of selflessness and the merit of putting others' needs ahead of our own. Thank you for making a difference. Julie Clayson, Family Support Therapist, and Alexis Neuberger, Counselor, Husner Elementary School. Julie and Alexis planned and led three sessions for parents about positive discipline strategies. Their detailed planning, including meal coordination, for families is a prime example of their dedication to providing support and resources to help students and families thrive. Thank you for making a difference. And now this evening, we will be recognizing our Superintendent's Excellence Awards with Dr. Hardy. Our first group of awards goes to Central High students who qualified for basketball. They were the 2018 Salina Invitational Champions for an SIT record, thirteenth time in tournament history, sub-state champions, back-to-back-to-back state tournament qualifiers, for the first time since 1974, '75, '76, and they placed second in the Class 5A State Tournament. Doug Finch is their coach. Ryan Modine, Josh Oldenettle, and Mark Ramsey are the assistants. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the basketball students please line up next to them? I will, um, I will read the names. And parents, if you care to take a photo this evening, be sure to stand and we'll pause for you to do that. Kayden Kikefer, freshman. Quinn Stewart, sophomore. Ben Driver, Jr. Brogan Richardson, Jr. David Grammer, Jr. Mark Grammer, Jr. Harper Williams, Jr. Jack Atherton, Senior. Ethan Kikefer, Senior. Ethan Spear, Senior. Sam Schaefer, Senior. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Glad to be here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job, Kristen.
Good to see you.
Glad to be here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Our next group of awards goes to girls' basketball athletes at Central High School who qualified at state. They were sub-state champions and qualified for the state tournament for the third year in a row, first time in school history, that they have gone three years in a row. Chris Spear is their coach, Tracy Pfeifer, Kirsten Dykes, and Nate Teis are the assistants. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the basketball students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsors? I will call, I will read the names from the Central Girls Basketball Team. Alyssa Backus, Senior. Ellie Cobb, Senior. Maya Ward, Senior. Seela Merkel, Junior. Kaia Arkayan, Junior. Holly Sanderson, Junior. Delaney Nash, Junior. Ebony Moore, Sophomore. Ashley Matthews, Sophomore. Sarah Opap, Sophomore. Peyton Griffin, Sophomore. Kayden Cobb, Sophomore. Hannah Jones, Sophomore. Manager. Minerva Martinez, Freshman. Manager. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thanks so much for your attendance on behalf of the kids. Congratulations.
Good job, Kristen.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for playing.
Thank you.
Our next group of awards goes to students who qualified for robotics at South. The robotics team competed in the Kansas Best Robotics Competition and achieved a third-place finish in the round robin of 33 teams, which earned them the right to participate in the multi-state semifinals. After mechanical failure, they finished seventh place. Adam Lesser and Lyric Cairns are their coaches. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And if all the robotics students will please come up as well. Participating students were Cameron Gormley, Senior. Jason Wen, Junior. Am Patel, Freshman. Patrick Staley, Senior. Nathan Streeter, Freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you?
Thank you for the good work. We enjoy the kind of stuff you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your work.
We now recognize Science Olympiad students at South High School who qualified for state. Matt Mosher is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the Science Olympiad students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their Diana Geist, Freshman. Ethan Sankey, Sophomore. Ethan Trong, Senior. David Olenberger, Sophomore. Kayden Odell, Senior. Am Patel, Freshman. Zodzen Fries, Freshman. Sawyer Gammun, Senior. Peyton Frum, Sophomore. Gavin Jones, Sophomore. And Gavin placed third in Herpetology and fourth in Microbe Mission at state. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thanks so much for your work, kids.
Thank you very much. Well done. How are you doing? Good to have you.
Congratulations. He is cute.
Well, we'd like to make a correction, if you'd please excuse us. And thanks to Mr. Stevens, we've invited Gage Roberts up to the front. We would like the Board to congratulate Gage, and we thank you for your accomplishment. And Gage, and for everyone in the audience, that we will make that correction with providing a certificate to you. Our last group of awards this evening is going to students involved in economics at South High School who qualified for state. Colin Carlson is their coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the economics students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? The following students qualified for the state level of the Kansas Economics Challenge: Taylor Davison, Junior. Macy Exline, Freshman. Tiana Marion, Freshman. Am Patel, Freshman. Sarah Skreg, Freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you?
Thanks for supporting the kids as well. Congratulations.
Next on our agenda is the Challenge Award Presentations with Deana Horst.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you. I guess it's sort of this evening, but as many of you know, three years ago, the Kansas State Board of Education announced a new vision for Kansas education. Kansas will lead the world, not Nebraska, not Oklahoma, but the world in the success of each student. We know that our schools are doing extraordinary work every day for the students of Kansas, whether you are a student or a staff member in Salina. We know you have been working very hard to be as successful as we in Salina want you to be. We also know that parents, grandparents, and community members who support the education of Salina students are vital to their success as well. It is my honor to be here to recognize and celebrate two of the great success stories in our state, Oakdale Elementary School and Sunset Elementary School. They're making a real difference for our most at-risk populations. As a retired teacher, I know firsthand how much hard work and total commitment goes into that effort. I am extremely proud and pleased to honor Oakdale with one of the awards and Sunset with one of the awards. There are eight Challenge Awards this year that were given in State Board of Education, District Six, so Salina has two of them, so, yes. This award recognizes schools for outstanding achievement and uncommon accomplishment based on Kansas Assessment Results, Attendance, and other demographic information. During the past 15 years since this award was created, we have seen significant improvement in the performance of Kansas students in reading and math, and have narrowed the gap between ethnic groups and between our economically disadvantaged and advantaged students. But there is still a lot more work to be done. That's why we're counting on our Challenge Award schools to continue pushing forward with the great work you've been doing. And of course, we invite all of the other schools to join them as well. And I hope you will allow me to take a moment to thank the members of the Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force, that's mouthful, for their vision in creating this award and for their ongoing work to ensure we yearly can recognize the hard work of our teachers, administrators, and students. Kansas is blessed with extraordinary educators and administrators whose leadership guides our students to achieve beyond what students themselves thought possible, and the Salina School District is a good example of that fact. Keep setting high expectations, whether you're a student or a staff member, or a member of the Board of Education, and keep providing the support your students need, and keep believing that Kansans can lead the world in the success of each student. And as you do that work, know you have the support and gratitude of every member on the State Board of Ed and at the State Department of Education as well. We are very proud of you. And also, thank you, the Salina Board of Ed, Superintendent Dr. Hardy, Central Office Administrators, and the Principals, Mr. Schrupp and Ms. Dorzweiler, I hope I didn't pronounce that incorrectly, for your excellent leadership. Without it, we probably would not have seen the success of the students that we're seeing. So, if Oakdale Elementary has some staff members here, that would, they would come forward, they're being recognized for fifth grade reading.
And then, I believe you need to...
There's a pattern.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We're so proud of you guys and what you do.
Thank you for your dedication.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you for your efforts.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then, if I could have staff from Sunset Elementary School, they are being recognized for fourth grade reading. And I've said that both these schools can make great...
Congratulations.
She's on the front row.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And thank you again for all of the hard work that you've given to make education great for the students in Salina and in the state of Kansas. Thank you again for allowing me to be here.
I think I neglected to mention that Deana Horst is the State School Board Representative from Salina, so we always welcome you here, Deana. Next on our recognitions and presentations is a video preview with Jennifer Bradford Vernon.
As a community partner with the Salina Chamber of Commerce, USD 305 now has a 60-second video showcasing some of the opportunities that makes Salina USD 305 a standout educational institution. And this evening, we will present the video.
At Salina Public Schools, our mission is simple: Learning for All, Whatever It Takes. Using that mission as a guiding principle results in students' access to expansive and engaging opportunities at all levels. At our elementary schools, rich curriculum forms building blocks for later learning. Unique individual plans of study include dual credit, career tech, and college prep offerings, strong fine arts, athletics, and clubs covering virtually every interest. Students are thoughtfully challenged and guided every step of the way. Recently, the district received a $110 million school bond that expanded career technical education, STEM offerings, and added all-day kindergarten, controlled entryways, and storm shelters. Technology is integrated at all levels, and high school students receive a Chromebook for access to anywhere, anytime learning.
What I like most about my school are the number of opportunities offered, from fine arts to STEM to the athletics program. Our school has been producing top-notch materials that other educational systems have been chasing after.
With quality, passionate staff, a diverse student body, and state-of-the-art opportunities, the future awaits at Salina Public Schools.
The video anchors USD 305's presence on the Salina Chamber of Commerce website, a place where new families, residents, and businesses seek out when considering relocating to Salina. This video will also be used by USD 305 for marketing purposes, and special thanks are offered to, and credit to, the many staff members and students, too many to mention individually throughout the district, who assisted with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of consent agenda items, which include minutes of the April 10th, 2018 Regular Meeting, Personnel Report, Treasurers Report, Investment Report, Journal Entries, approved USD 305 District Cabling and Installation Bid to Precision Electrical Contractor LLC in the amount of $327,553. Approved Husner PTA Gift Acceptance for Equipment for the Purpose of 32 Walkie-Talkies in the amount of $8,800. And approved 2018-2019 Food Program prices to include an increase of 10 cents for both student and adult meal prices. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Madam President, I move acceptance of the consent agenda.
Emma Doherty, Second.
Motion Second, any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Is there anyone here from Husner for that? Would you come forward? We'd like to hear about that. Thank you.
As a staff, we've been really focusing on the safe and secure piece, and one of the things we've kind of run into is the communication part. And so, we proposed to staff, or proposed to PTA about purchasing walkie-talkies so that staff members could communicate in the event of an emergency situation.
Okay, that's very generous of them to do that.
Yes, we have a great PTA.
Let us know how that works.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is public forum, and this is the time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward, they may do so now. I do have some parameters that I need to share with you. Seeing that there are several, is this all about the same topic?
Actually, two of us plan to speak, and the other two are here for support.
Okay.
And it is about a certain incident, but we have different points to make.
Okay.
And so, we'd be very different.
I do have some parameters I need to share with you for that.
Sure.
As a reminder, public forum is a non-action item on our agenda. The Board appreciates patrons taking the time to share with us about their thoughts and their concerns. This is not an appropriate time or place for patrons to make comments of a personal nature about any district employee or student. Persons making comments which violate the privacy rights of district employees and students will be asked to stop speaking and cease your remarks. If a patron or parent has a concern with one or more employees, the Board will refer that person to the appropriate supervisor or to the superintendent for further review. And at this time, I will, I will offer a maximum of five minutes.
That's perfect.
Since there are two people.
And before we get started, I would like to distribute to all of you a packet that I have.
Okay, I do have one more thing.
Sure.
If those two of you that are speakers, if you would announce your name and address and phone number.
Absolutely. My name is Rachel Hind Constantino, and I live at 2636 Brett Avenue here in Salina.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica Weichel, and I live at 1114 River here in Salina.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and pass it out, please.
And then, to anyone in the audience who'd also like a packet, they are available, and you can get one from me after I present. Okay, I will begin. First, thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to present this information to you. The reason I'm here today is to do just that and to especially make sure that the parents of Salina students and our entire community is aware of an incident which occurred last Wednesday at our Leadership Retreat titled "The Power of One Standing Together," held at First Covenant Church. As you can see in the packet provided, there is a consent form with customary information. Rather than review this entire form, I will highlight the portion for which I and 49 other parents, which include Lakewood parents as well as South parents, consented to. I give permission for my daughter to ride in transportation provided by the school district with a certified driver. I understand that my daughter will be responsible for making up schoolwork. I consent and authorize seminar and/or newspaper staff to photograph and publish my daughter's image, as long as there is no intent to use the image in a disparaging manner. I further agree by my signature that sponsors, instructors, administrators, and Unified School District Number 305 are released from any and all liability in case of an incident, accident, or injury to the above-named student. The second page of my packet highlights information acquired from the book which is mentioned in the consent form. Its main focus is on eating disorders, and it states in the text the following: "This is the first prevention program of its kind to effect sustained positive changes in girls' body image, body satisfaction, and body esteem, important risk factors in the development of eating disorders. The program also results in sustained positive changes in girls' body image, body satisfaction, The program also results in sustained positive changes in girls' knowledge about health, nutrition, weightism, and puberty." At this retreat, which healthy lifestyles was the main focus, the following comments were heard by middle-school girls from their mentors/panelists: multiple sex partners are okay; sex on the first date's okay; nude selfies are okay if you're comfortable with yourself and know the consequences; how to have sex with the same sex; what anal sex is; what oral sex is; and how to use a dental dam and how to make one with a condom; how to tell your parents you've had sex; and how to preface it as though it may happen when in fact it already has. "If you're comfortable enough picking your nose in front of your partner, then you're comfortable enough to have sex with that person," was a comment made by the main facilitator. "If you're not getting pleasure, then you can do it yourself." The fact of the matter is this: that certain messages were absolutely condoned by known mentors in their community who refrained from saying anything when they should have spoken up. In addition, by not speaking up regarding nude selfies when they were discussed, the potential for exploitation of a child exists, which is a felony charge and requires registration as a sex offender for life between one or both parties. The environment that this was conducted in was not a safe environment for students. Students were apprehensive to discuss any or all of the topics with their parents and were so afraid that they'd be hated by their peers for disclosing what happened at this retreat. This further validates the social dangers in having roundtable discussions like this in place where anything goes. Lastly, the real leaders in this circumstance turned out to be those girls who felt comfortable enough to admit what conversations did occur with the facilitators and with those panelists who had inappropriate conversations with them, and I really want to just highlight that, that we appreciate so much, and we want girls in the future to always not be afraid to tell when something feels uncomfortable to their parents or to anyone who's willing to listen.
I think I just want to mention that this happened over a course of 30 to 45 minutes, that the girls were sitting at this station. They were visibly uncomfortable. A lot of the students, when their parents asked them about this, didn't even want to say the words, turn to their parents and say these words. I did not think I would be discussing some of these topics with my 12-year-old daughter, who also was very uncomfortable at the fact that people that she trusted, teachers and leaders in the community, did not stop this conversation, did not ask the, redirect, I guess, the topics, and so they just continuously were subjected to some of these things over and over again, to the point where one of the students said, "Oh, here we go again," because we went back on some of the topics. So this was over a span of about 30 to 45 minutes. So it wasn't just that the comments were made in a matter of five to 10 minutes and there was, "Okay, wait, what just happened?" It was 30 to 45 minutes of constantly being said, and it wasn't stopped. Also, we were not contacted by the school regarding this, and that's very alarming to me as a parent. I know that you have to do an investigation, but that day, if somebody would have just sent us an email that said some inappropriate conversation may have happened today, you may want to talk to your daughter about this. We are continuing to investigate. Please feel free to contact us with questions, and that was not done. We were just notified today by the school after we had a meeting and let people know what had happened. Also, the contact information for the panelists was provided to the students, so not only did our leaders and teachers allow the students to sit through 30 to 45 minutes of this, they then provided them with contact information, phone numbers, and Snapchats, so that our 12- and 13-year-old students can call the panelists who gave them this information outside of school. So to me, that is that we endorsed, USD 305 and your teachers endorse these students, so they're a safe place where you can get accurate information. Also, I'm deeply saddened by this because there is a part that we can't undo with my daughter, and it's the biggest thing, is that she was looking for her leaders and her teachers to protect her. She was trying to get eye contact with them, and I've spoke, the number of the girls have been very upset by the fact that they were in a situation and they did not feel like it was stopped. And that, to me, is something I don't know that we'll be able to undo, because now they do not trust in certain situations that they will be protected.
Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak, and I really look forward to discussing this matter with you in the future. I do hope that, moving forward, that we can together develop, whether it's if this program's in place, a healthier program for students that would mean this sort of incident would never occur ever again. And if someone would like to talk about these topics, at least give consent to us, parents. That's my biggest concern right now, is there was no parental consent regarding these topics and the lack of transparency, and that's why today I disclosed all of the things, the comments that were made, because I feel that the parents of Salina and our entire community deserve that right to know, regardless of how uncomfortable it is to talk about. But thank you so much.
Thank you again for taking your time to visit with the board. We always encourage and value input from the community and USD 305 patrons, and we appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Next on our agenda is action agenda with Central High Forensics Out-of-State Field Trip. Is it Jubilee Kinney presenting?
Good evening. So Central High School Forensics has qualified two students for the National Catholic Forensics League Nationals, which will be held in Washington, DC, May 24th through the 28th. For them to qualify, they have to go to a qualifying tournament in-state, and they have to rank the top five in their event. The students that we have qualified, one ranked first in domestic extemporaneous speaking and the other ranked second in original oration. Those are the only two students that would be attending. What they would get out of this experience is an opportunity to witness other students' performances and develop their skills through competition, and also to gain better resources beyond our four walls at the high school. And this is not during schooltime, and it's after school, it's let out for the summer, so they would not be missing any curriculum.
Are there any questions?
Madam President.
Carol.
I move we approve the Central High Forensics trip to Washington, DC on May 24th through the 28th, 2018, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second as well? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0. Next on our agenda is a course proposal with Lynn Exline.
During the last board meeting, Mr. Showman, Mr. Stevens, and I presented a course proposal for jazz band as a credit course. In the past, as I stated at the last meeting, we have offered that class, but it has not been for credit. The recommendation would be to add that as a credit-bearing class, and I was asked a question at the last meeting about the rationale for requiring enrollment in concert band, and so we did engage in a conversation with the band directors about that, and their reasoning is the fundamental piece that a concert band offers. They feel very strongly that they want the concert band to be the foundation of our instrumental music program on the band side, and feel strongly that the fundamentals that are developed for a well-rounded musician require that a student have music beyond jazz. And with that, they feel like they would like to keep the description as it was when we presented it last time and require the enrollment in both jazz band and concert band. So that is the proposal that is before you this evening.
We had questions last time? Are there any questions this time?
I don't have questions, but go ahead, Ann.
Ann?
I was just going to say that I recall reading some of our information that the directors, band directors, thought that colleges want people to have that band background, not just jazz to, for, you know, financial aid and all that kind of thing.
One of the comments was that when students are going for a scholarship at the post-secondary level, that the pieces that they have to play are concert band pieces, that they, when they're doing those tryouts, that the post-secondary institutions don't really want to hear jazz-type music, they want to hear that well-rounded musicianship. And so they feel like in order for us to prepare our students to be able to enter those post-secondary programs, that this is a requirement that would continue to build those fundamentals.
Any other comments? Gary?
I still have the same opinion I had last time, that I don't see that we shouldn't open this up as an opportunity for all students, and I could see very easily that you would have a lot of students who would want to be in the jazz band who wouldn't be looking at a college as a college music major. We've added STEM programs, we've added all of these other programs, and then we say, "Okay, but this child's going to have 25% of their school day in two different music courses." If that's what the child and their parent and their guidance counselor want them to take to prepare for college, I think that's okay, but if they would be wanting to get in jazz band and wouldn't be able to take another art course or a STEM course or a foreign language or a college prep course, I think that would be a really tough situation to put a child in. So because of that, I'm not going to support this. I do support our music, I do support our arts of all kinds to the max, but I just can't support tying a student up for two hours out of the day if all they want to be in is jazz band.
Any other comments?
I have a question about music program.
Carol?
I'm trying to think of what would be a comparable situation. Are our madrigal groups, and I'm assuming they aren't for credit, but are students in madrigal groups, can they be in a madrigal without being in the choir? Do you know? Lynn?
It'd be like New Dawn and...
Dump that on you.
Are you talking about the vocal select choirs, like New Dawn and...
Basically, yeah.
Right, they do enroll in the upper-level performing group and in that vocal select choir, so they are, it would be the same situation. It's a dual enrollment situation where those students are enrolled in kind of that concert group and then the performing group as well.
Right. Well, I'm sorry I called it madrigal, that shows how old I am, because that's what they used to be called.
I was trying to make, I was trying to figure out what the question was, so I think I got it.
Sorry. Thanks, I appreciate that. So we have the larger group, but they must be a part of that before they are in the smaller group as well.
Okay. Comments?
And I think I sent a message around to some of the administrators that I want to try to remain consistent, so if that question were to come up, I would try to remain consistent to allow flexibility for the student, parents, counselor to decide on those as well, just because I think we, I would like to see us open up the opportunities to students as much as we can rather than restrict them.
I have a, I mean, I would have similar concerns as Gary. I played piano in jazz band at Lakewood High School, or at Lakewood Middle School, and that non-instrument offered for...
Concert piano?
Yeah, concert piano. I was taking private lessons and auditioned for jazz band and made it into the group, so was not enrolled in concert band or orchestra at the same time. And the same with bass, too. I mean, you could have a situation where...
Bass, guitar, and piano.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We don't, I don't think we have a motion.
Oh, I thought there was.
Madam President, in majority, I make a motion, we accept this course proposal.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-2. Next, textbook adoptions with Lynn Exline.
During the last meeting, I shared with you the proposed textbook adoptions that our teachers have been working on during this past school year, and at this time, what I would like to propose is that those books, that we be allowed permission to go ahead and order those textbooks and use those in our classrooms.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Carol?
Madam President, I move we approve the textbook adoptions and purchase of textbooks and instructional resources as presented.
In majority, second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry?
Will those textbooks, I haven't had a chance to look at them, and I wanted to, will they remain in your office, Lynn?
I can keep them in the office for another week. They're in there, and you're welcome to pop by any time. We'll just let the teachers know that we'll keep the review copies another week.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on our action agenda are the 2018-2019 handbooks with Shannon Rector.
Good evening. Last time I presented about the elementary, middle school, and high school handbook changes, and I would entertain any questions.
Okay. Any comments? Motion, Gary?
Madam President, I move we approve the 2018-2019 elementary student handbook as presented.
In majority, second.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0. Thank you. Next on our agenda is capital improvement plan with Chris Upson.
I'm sorry, we have to...
Oh, middle school?
Middle school.
Oh, I do. Yep. Wow, I'm not doing very well tonight.
I apologize.
I'm just ready to get this going. Okay.
Madam President, I move we approve the 2018-2019 middle school student handbooks as presented at the April 10, 2018, meeting.
In majority, second. In majority, second it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0. High school?
Madam President, I move that we approve the 2018-2019 high school student handbooks as presented at the April 10, 2018, meeting.
In majority, second it.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0. Okay, Chris, capital improvement plan.
Good evening. Two weeks ago, I presented the draft fiscal year 19 capital improvement plan, and pending any questions, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Any comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Madam President, I need to make a motion.
No motion.
I move that we approve the capital improvement plan as presented.
In majority, second.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I will do better on the next one.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0. Next, we have a resolution of the Board of Education's intent to non-renew contract for probationary certified staff at the end of the contract year 2017-2018.
Good evening. It's the time of year when we're working very hard to figure out what our staffing needs are for next year and what our staffing will be and what holes we have to fill. Continuing contract law, as you know, requires us to give formal written notice to any professional employee whose contract we intend not be renewed for the following school year. In that vein, you have a resolution before you, which we recommend you adopt, that orders the board clerk to issue that statually required notice to the teacher. Impacted. If you adopt the resolution, the teacher would be mailed, certified mail, notice or given and delivered in person the notice, and the final intent to not, the final resolution on non-renewal would occur at the May 2018 meeting.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the resolution for non-renewal as presented.
Thank you. Sarah, second?
In majority, second it.
Do we need to read it? I'm sorry.
No, we do not.
You do not have to read the verbiage as long as it's included in the packet.
Yeah. Do I have a second? Did you second it?
I seconded it, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is discussion agenda, and we do not have anything listed, so we're moving on to school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Upcoming dates are Sunday, May 6, Retirement Reception and Recognition at Lakewood at 3:00 p.m. Thursday, May 10, DCP Graduations at Salina West at 4:00 p.m. Sunday, May 13, Graduation, Central High School at 2:00 p.m., South High School at 5:00 p.m. Thursday, May 31, SAECE Graduation Ceremony at 7:00 p.m. And board reports, I'll start with you, Jim.
Pretty light. I did make it back for this meeting, though, from vacation. The 18th came right back into a Parks and Rec Advisory Council meeting, and then the ribbon cutting today over at Salina Stadium.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Several meetings. The Special Education Cooperative met on April 18th. Couple of issues of some significance. There was a lengthy discussion of finance for next year. On the positive side, it seems that the new finance bill, as passed by the legislature, does contain an increase in funding for special education, which means that the assessments for the member districts can be met in ways other than coming directly out of the pockets of the individual districts. Dr. Hardy again presented information on USD 305's health plan and how that will impact member districts potentially because their special ed people are all on the same salary schedule and so on, health insurance and so on as 305. So there's always an impact there. Under personnel, six additional paraprofessionals have been hired since January, primarily because of students who have significant disabilities transferring into 305. And then given the continued shortage of staff in special education positions, Director Mike Lauer has suggested establishing a Grow Your Own Teachers Program specifically for special education. And the group gave him the go-ahead to bring back some additional information and potentially a plan for the next meeting. NEA Salina Executive Board met on Thursday, April 19th. We discussed a number of issues, teacher satisfaction with efforts that are currently being made to increase plan time. People at the high school and elementary level seem to be satisfied with what's happening. Middle school is still not accounted for at this time, and we're looking for ways in which teachers at both of those buildings could be assisted in getting additional plan time. NEA also asked if it would be acceptable to open voter registration tables at the back-to-school assembly, as well as to promote a social event for new teachers to assist them in making connections in the district. We discussed what to expect regarding the mistake in the school funding bill. No one really knows for sure on that, but it was an interesting discussion. And we also heard from Shanna Rector about school safety plans. It was a very thorough presentation and members of NEA Salina had lots of opportunity to ask questions of Shanna. I also attended the Chamber Ledge Forum Meeting on Saturday, April 21st. It was reported in the Journal. Most of the questions from the audience were directed towards school finance, and again, projections of how this $80 million mistake will be corrected and what the judicial review of the bill might mean for legislators. But one of the things I wanted to mention in particular, the first question that was asked about school finance was, how are schools going to be held accountable for this money? And I thought there was kind of an edge to that question. It's as though someone, at least in the audience, was thinking, this is a windfall for schools and they don't, they don't really need this money, so we're going to make them toe the line. How are you going to do that? I think it continues to be incumbent upon us as school districts to do what Deena said, show people the necessity for increasing school finance, allowing Kansas to lead the way with Kansas can. We've got a lot of people who are antagonistic toward more funding for education in our schools, including the Kansas Policy Institute that advertises all the time. So we need to keep putting the message forward to say, this is important to our success, to the success of our kids. And as Dr. Hardy has said, how many kids do you want to leave behind as you set your graduation rates? If 87% is all we care to graduate, which ones are we going to pick to leave behind? It's important to think about the big picture, so.
Interesting meetings.
Interesting meetings.
Thank you, Carol. Emma?
The ribbon cutting ceremony and also the at Central, which was just wonderful, and the stadium and tower and everything, we can be very proud of that. And then also continue to write to the legislators about public education funding.
I was in several buildings over the past two weeks. Central for Future Finance Now. I manned the housing table with a couple other community members, and it was a very cool program, using, I thought, very real world problems to connect with the students. Thanks for, or thanks to United Way for putting that on and coordinating with the district. Big Truck Night at Heartland was a crazy success, there were so many people there. Lots of little ones climbing all over, some vehicles and lots of sirens as well. The Parks Board meeting last week, there will be a study session with the city on May 14th at 2:30 to review that plan. We'll see how it affects some of the facilities the district uses. I read this afternoon at sunset in the library, celebrating National Library Month with a great group of first graders, and that was fun. And then just this morning as well, delivered You Make a Difference Awards to Julie Clayson and Alexis Neuberger at Husner. So they called them down to the office, and Julie is on some sort of student behavior crisis response team and came in a little frazzled because that's what she thought she was coming to, not the awards presentation. So that was nice. Principal Lori Munsel gave me a quick tour of the building while I was there as well, and it was neat to see how some of the KISA stuff that we're talking about corresponds with the stuff they're doing in the buildings, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Ann?
I also attended the ribbon cutting at Salina Stadium, and it's quite impressive with its new elevator up there to the top. I read fourth graders this morning at Sunset School. And I read the day that the crayons quit. Okay. And I also, last week, attended a conference, it was not as a school board member, but it was Restorative Kansas Conference, and Shanna Rector and Sarah Lancaster attended too, all about people across the state implementing restorative practices and restorative justice in their schools and elsewhere in their communities. There's kind of a small group across the state, but we had people from national groups as well, talking about the remarkable improvement in school climate that happens when you get a whole school building relationships and when something goes wrong, the group of people that were affected gets together and explains how they were affected. And the instigator usually has some great revelations at those meetings, and some great drops in expulsions and suspensions and in-school and out-of-school suspensions were the experience of many of the groups. So that was quite impressive and exciting. That was at Bethel College last Thursday and Friday. I also attended this Smoky Hill Education Service Center Board Meeting. We're doing executive director evaluation there, and they have spent a lot of time in the last few months clearing out their library because no one wanted their old VCRs and things like that. And so now they have an extra room, and this Smoky Hill Education Service Center does a lot of, provides professional development for many districts in this region, especially smaller districts who can't afford to bring in any outside presenters like we might be able to. And so they'll bring somebody in, and lots of different districts will come in and take advantage of that. And so now they, with their extra room, they can have three meetings at a time and not just two. So that has been a good development for them. That's all. Thank you.
Gary?
No particular meetings, but I've continued to be busy planning long distance for our 305 live concert on May 23rd. Takes a lot of effort and working with a lot of various teachers and looking forward to that event.
Thank you. I also attended the Salina Stadium ribbon cutting, and standing outside there in the wind tunnel from the north to the south, and the cool air that dropped 20 degrees while we were there made that, those heaters really good. Thank you, Chris, for that. And it's amazing. It has air conditioning and heating in it, and I felt easy access whether by staircase or elevator, plenty of room to move around in, spectacular view, everybody can see and everybody has space. It looks great and safe and looks wonderful. Thanks for that. Heartland Come and Go Lunch, I attended that, and they always have it in a large room with smaller tables around for you to sit down and eat, but the room is literally filled and stuffed with art. And they had art displays up and down in between the tables, which was really neat also. Students have quite a flair for art at that level, and I love it. Had a good visit with some people there, too. Also tended Kansas Teacher of the Year Luncheon at South Middle School, and it's a group of teachers who place first or second in their regional, and then they go visit all the schools around the state of Kansas. And we were fortunate to be able to have them at our school, and they toured several different places around Salina as well. Delivered You Do Make a Difference to Central Kitchen staff of about 10 people. So we met in the dining room and not in the kitchen room, and they thought they were going to be, they were sweating bullets, they thought they were going to be reprimanded for something, I think. And I heard them talking and I knew a couple of them, and they said hi to me, but it made no sense to them why I was there, so. But we surprised them, and it was delightful, and I loved doing it. And a group like that working together under difficult situation, it was really nice to give those awards. Tomorrow morning is a chamber meeting at 7:00 AM. So that's what I've been up to. Superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam President. The stadium ribbon cutting was really nice. I think it's, I want to compliment Jennifer on a great job of organizing that. It was short but sweet. If you, I would just encourage our folks, if you get a chance to go there, if you did not get there today, to have an opportunity to go up in the elevator and look out on the field from such a great press box is very impressive. I think it really raises the status of Salina. When people come and visit, they'll know we are a class act. I also think it'll be an icon in our community, you know, another place that people go by and see that is an impressive thing, so it's really a nice, a nice, well-done project. I want to thank our board for making contact with our legislators. That is much appreciated. As I talked to our legislators after this first part of the session, I visited with all of them right after, I gave them a couple days break, and then I texted them and then they called me. And they all, they received a lot of contact from our NEA leadership, from the board, from community members, and it did have an effect. I think the cumulative effort of that really did have an effect, so thank you for that. Trying to get to all of our legislators before they get to the next part of our session, I had a chance to visit with all of them this week, and I finished up the last one last night. We had about an hour-long discussion. And I, I'm just, when I visit with them, I think I have a good enough relationship that I just ask them bluntly, you know, how are you going to vote? And I appreciate that they, they told me, and they usually follow through exactly what they say they're going to do. So there's a lot of discussions, you know, like possible amendment and all those things, but really, really good discussion. So I want to thank our legislators for that. I also want to thank the Salina Police Department. We had a great meeting, with, really led by Shanna Rector, with Chief Nelson and his staff and some of our leadership, talking about, it's kind of reviewing some of the events and things that we've dealt with, how we work cooperatively. We were very blessed to have a police department that responds to us really quickly. They also are great to share and provide resources when needed. So we had a really good, I guess you would call it after-action, visit where we can compare notes. I think good relationships were built, and we plan on making this a regular effort on our part. So I really want to compliment Chief Nelson and his folks. We had a really excellent KISA meeting last Thursday at Smoky Hill Education Service Center. It was just impressive. Emporia was there, Hays, Gary County, along with us. What I really appreciated was each of the school district had a chance to share, and we have a lot to be proud of. We have a lot of great things going on, and I know, I know that Lynn was trying to be humble about it, but honestly, I thought it was really a showcase of all the things that are going on with our efforts. And we are really into, doing a good job with KISA, where we've internalized it, and I think we're probably one of the few ones to have a board that actually did some work on it. So a compliment to our board on that. I do also want to, I have to tell you, I think, sometimes when I think I've had about every experience you can have in education, and then there's a new one that comes along. Last week, we had a lot of events in one evening, and one of the joys and I guess icing on the cake for me is to attend to different events in the evening. What a great way to finish up my day. And it was one evening, we had the art at Central, which was fantastic. And the same evening, we had a elementary orchestra concert, and it was well done. All the orchestras were up, orchestras were there that feeds into Central High. So they were up all up in their stage, and they're just being so dignified, and the teacher has done a great job, Mrs. Modine, of having them sit up straight and everything. And I was just really impressed of how professional it was. And then when I said, I think I've heard everything, and then all of a sudden they break into, we will rock you. I've never heard orchestra do, we will rock you. But I just want to compliment, one of the other blessings that we have is an amazing music program in our school district. And our teachers do a great job of building enthusiasm, and you can just see it flow right through our whole district. So that was one of my highlights from last week.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is that, I don't believe we have anything for executive session at all?
No, Madam.
So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.